Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order the May 4th City Commission meeting. Will the clerk please call, roll?
Mayor Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Angel.
Here.
Commissioner Arbke.
Here.
Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Peck.
At this time, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
(inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, it's the Citizens Forum. If there are any citizens out there that wish to speak on something not on today's agenda, please come forward, give your name and address, please.
Gary Schwarzenbauer, 528 South College. On behalf of opponents of the latest smoking ban and citizens in general, I feel obligated to offer some follow-up response since last week's meetings based on a lot of people contacting me. Number one, political science data clearly suggest that for diverse reasons, there are indeed varying degrees of confusion and sophistication at the ballot on national, state, and local issues all the time. It's a fact of life. The same principle applies to most of the human experience. In my humble opinion, anyone who chooses not to understand that is perhaps either lying to themselves or being foolish. Number two, it's utter nonsense on stilts for Commissioner Peck to assume that I, simply speaking on behalf of clarity at the ballot, would let stand or approve of any of his insinuations. Here is what Mr. Peck, not me, said, quote, "It assumes those against the ordinance are those who happen to have any addiction to nicotine, or those are somehow less sophisticated, or as I read it," meaning he, Aaron, "are stupid and less intelligent than the rest of the community," end quote. Those are Mr. Peck's own words, that smack of condescension and elitism, not my words. I would hate to think that Mr. Peck's very words are in any way a projection of his innermost feelings. I think, and I hope, Aaron and I know each other well enough, to not misassume that either of us feels that way. Sometimes it's easy to get caught up in passionate rhetoric. Even Salina Journal's Tom Bell does it once in a while. We can surely agree to disagree without being insulting, rude, crude, and obnoxious. Number three, you new commissioners, Samantha, Tom, and Norm, you all campaigned with some version of, "I would have voted against the ban, or would have supported business had I been on the former commission." Lucy, you voted, you did vote against the ban, January '09, and Aaron voted for the ban, January '09. Tom, your motion, with a 3-2 majority vote, 4/20/09, successfully placed discussion for repeal on the 4/27/09 agenda. You participated via long-distance conference call. By the way, we lost you before the discussion is over. Be interested to know what happened. Conspicuously at that meeting, no clear procedure was provided for you commissioners to make a motion to simply vote yes or no to repeal the ban that day, which was five days before it was to go into effect. Smacks a little bit of slickery, dickery, doc, perhaps. Subsequent to Commissioner Peck's assumptive patronizing rebuff of my call to repeal for more potential clarity at the ballot, the process abruptly stopped. It appears in the brief moment of that confusion, Commissioners Angel, Arbke, off the phone by them, and Larson, that you perhaps capitulated or flip-flopped on what seemed to be part of your prior principled pro-business intention, perhaps, to at least consider repeal. Is that true? Number five, even though the ban took effect in May 2, and the commissioner of this new governing body can still step up with a motion to repeal at any subsequent meeting, city staff at your request, as they mentioned last week, can provide in advance an ordinance to repeal for each of you to review, so that you can vote yes or no right then and there. Six, and last, for the record, may we, the citizens, now hear from each of you, what is your current position on repeal? And again, this is for the record. What is your current position on repeal for any reason of the latest smoking ban? And will any one of you still consider initiating a motion to repeal for any reason? Thanks for your time and attention. Any questions, clarifications, or responses? I would like you to at least, if you can, I don't know if I need to stay standing, so you can be on, I can request you to be on record to at least verbalize your latest stand.
Mayor, could I address one aspect of what was stated?
Sure.
You used a phrase, slickery, and went on and on on this question about giving you something to actually take action in that last meeting. I thought we made it abundantly clear that it does take an ordinance to be drawn up with a first reading, a second reading, and publication. Therefore, there really wasn't an option unless an ordinance was ready and in hand, which it wasn't. So, I think that's worth clarifying for the, for those who are listening, just to make sure that they understand that that really wasn't an option. It's not a, it wasn't a choice, it just simply wasn't a technical option that was allowable.
Personally, Mr. Schwarzenbauer, I'm really tired of the, of the whole issue. I was under the impression that because those that had gotten the petition ready to go, it was ready to go. So, it was under my assumption that on Tuesday, since they had all the ballots, or the petition with all the signatures ready to go, that they were going to march themselves into the county attorney's office, get it going, get the ball rolling, and that possibly within six weeks, we would have a special election. So, I, that was my personal assumption, or what I had understood. So, that is my reasoning for letting it go, and let's let it get to the special ballot that we all knew was going to eventually happen, or at this point, not. I don't know where they stand on that. So, that was my reasoning for that. I cannot speak on behalf of the other commissioners, and Commissioner Vice Mayor Peck is out of town today, so I can't even speak on his behalf either. That was my reasoning for that.
Very good.
Gary, I will say I agree with Mr. Gage. I think they made it clear what needed to be done if we wanted to repeal, or even wanted to consider repeal. I will tell you, my position hasn't changed since our Candidates Forum back in March. What I said then is still where I'm at today. If this is going to a special election, whether we take action or whether we don't take action, I don't want to expend any additional city resources for more public forums, for additional study sessions, when we're already going to have to spend at least $20,000 on a special election. I'd rather get it there sooner than later and save the public as much money as we can.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'd like to make mine clear, although I think I made it clear last week. I would like to echo what Commissioner Angel said, and in our times of budget, of water, and of all of the other things that are important in City of Salina, I cannot just sit and vote yes or no on an issue that took a previous commission a methodical and long process in order to do. It is not a five-minute action plan, and if my actions then don't say anything other than casting a verbal choice, then it is really a bad waste of time to take that process, because for me, it wouldn't be just a vote. I would start at the beginning, look at the data, listen to the citizens, and go through all of that. So, it would be a futile action, because we've been assured, again, by both sides, the proponents and the opponents, that they are ready to take it to a vote, no matter what action the commission takes, an action to overturn, or no action, and it will go to a vote. So, that means that that is wasted time, that I believe the citizens deserve us to put into budget to make sure that our sales tax revenues are where they are, and to make sure that our city services are intact, that we don't have to do things, that we do have a water supply for the future. So, and, and finally, during the campaign of this, it was presented as, as only two things. If you are for the ban, then you are against business owners' rights, and that's naive. I'm a business owner in an industry that has a lot of governmental policies and intervention, and I'm definitely for business owners' rights. So, for the record, I don't want anybody to misunderstand and think that I am not for small business, and I am not for business owners' rights, because that's who I am.
Thank you.
Gary, I'll tell you, I tried to attend that meeting through the 100%. I did lose my uplink, and I couldn't get back online, so I apologize for that. I have not changed my position. I think that this does infringe on some small business owners. I think there's some other things that are happening right now that are going to make a difference later on. Senate Bill 25, which is the smoking ordinance for the state, is still, I think, pretty viable, maybe not for this session, but for the next session. That could make a difference on the ordinance that we have in, in effect right now. I think if I could save the city $20,000 to $25,000 by not having a special election, I would go that direction, and I would want the people that would want this on the ballot, a general ballot, to get ready, get organized, and get it on that, where we can have more people vote. So, I think the more people that participate in this process, the better off we're going to be in terms of getting what the citizens' will is on this. So, if the small business owners want to have a greater voice, they need to start working on that right now to get it on the general ballot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other citizens that wish to speak today on anything not on today's agenda? If not, we'll move on to awards and proclamations.
Item 4.1, the day of May 7, 2009, as Day of Prayer in the City of Salina. Roberta Huesman will read the proclamation.
Hello. The proclamation says, "Whereas the National Day of Prayer is a tradition first proclaimed by Continental Congress in 1775, and whereas in 1952, the National Day of Prayer became an event inaugurated by leadership groups in the United States Senate and House of Representatives, and in 1988, legislation was unanimously ratified by both Houses of Congress and signed by President Ronald Reagan, stating that the National Day of Prayer would be the first Thursday of every May, and whereas this is the 58th consecutive observance of the National Day of Prayer, and whereas it is fitting and proper to give thanks to God by observing this day in the City of Salina, when all may acknowledge our blessings and express our gratitude for them, while recognizing the need for strengthening religious and moral values in our city, state, and nation. Now, therefore, I am Lucy Larson, Mayor of the City of Salina, do hereby proclaim May 7, 2009, as a Day of Prayer throughout the City of Salina, and I urge all citizens to observe this day in relevant ways of its importance and significance."
Are there any events, or?
Actually, there are more this year than there ever have been. Wednesday night, there's a United Youth Ministry Alliance, it's all the youth directors and pastors in town are having, they had 300 youths last year do this, so they're doing the same thing. They are meeting at Church of the Cross Methodist Church, and they're having music, praise at first, and then they're having six different prayer stations where the kids will pray over different topics, and it was very successful. They're doing that again. We have the prayer breakfast, 7:00 a.m. Thursday morning, at the Bicentennial Center. Tickets are $12, and you can get them at the Bicentennial Center. Then, the First United Methodist Church has opened up their doors as an all-day prayer event from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for individuals or groups to come and go. They have the prayer guides for National Day of Prayer there, that people can spontaneously come there. And then at 5:30, they're having a potluck for anyone who's participated that day. And then, even at 7 o'clock, there is, at the University Methodist Church on Santa Fe, they are having a prayer and healing service for National Day of Prayer. So, there's really quite a few things going on.
Great. Thank you very much. I have a signed proclamation for you.
Yes.
Okay, we don't have any public hearings, and item scheduled for a certain time, so we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of April 27, 2009. Item 6.2, award of contract for the filter building monitoring area roof replacement project number 092755 to Larry Booze Roofing Incorporated in the amount $11,937.03. Item 6.3, resolution number 096619, admitting Articles 17 and 18 of the Personnel Manual. Item 6.4, resolution number 096621, authorizing city manager instruct binding coverage for excess workers' compensation insurance. Item 6.5, resolution number 096620, providing the acquisition of firefighting equipment and providing the issuance of general obligation bonds.
While I don't want to pull anything from the agenda, I just have a quick question regarding 6.1. This filter building monitoring area, is this, where is this building?
The building is located at the water treatment plant, and there's a, a filter building that has these observation areas up on the very, very top of the roof, and windows and lights to bring air into the building. That's the roof location.
Okay. My next question, real quick, Martha, is from the quote to the engineer's estimate, there was quite a difference.
I thought someone would ask that question. We bid this project last year, and found that roofing was very, very expensive due to the hailstorms and all of the different damage that was out there. So, identical spec. We bid it this year, had four bidders. Last year, we had a single bidder that was very near that high estimate, and we had done some other roofs that were per square foot at that cost. So, the low bidder from Wichita, we've contacted Wichita city staff to confirm the type of work they do and the quality of work, and reviewed the materials that they'd propose to use, and find everything to be up to snuff, and discussing with them, they just want to keep their employees busy. They're very, very short on work. So, one year later, obviously made a big difference for us.
Economics 101. Okay, all right.
That's the answer.
That was my only question.
All right.
All right. I also had a question on 6.3, regarding the smoking ordinance. I don't know who to address this to. I just had a quick question. You probably didn't even have to come all the way up, Natalie, but where you're going to change it in the vehicles, I understand that they will be, whether there's one person or two people in the vehicle, it will be all non-smoking?
Yes.
Which is the difference of what it is right now? Is that correct?
Correct, and we did add some language on there to include, we defined vehicles to be enclosed, rolling equipment.
Correct.
So, that does extend a little bit beyond where our current policy reaches.
Lawnmowers or something like that that doesn't, is not enclosed, is be exempt from this, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, now that I asked my questions, does any commissioner want to pull anything from the consent agenda? If not, I'll bring it back for action.
Mayor, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes 4-0.
Item 7.1, resolution number 096618, authorize an agreement among Mariposa Homeowners Association and Cornerstone Development Group, LLC.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, you have at your place the latest version of the proposed agreement, and if I may, I'll suggest that you turn to the aerial photo that is in your, attached to your blue sheet. Mr. Stack informs me he has some pictures that should save several thousand words, so I will defer to him quickly.
I hope so. This is a picture of the Mariposa Detention Pond, and this is a, we just wanted to show you, it is, it is a well-maintained pond, it's in pretty good shape, and really, these pictures, we believe, speak to that effect. This is a view looking west at the pond, it's very, it's manicured, it's not holding any ponds. Go to the next one, John, just cycle through. That's Mr. Smith's house, where our sewer easement is going to go right along that slope there. There's the outlet culvert, it's in pretty good shape. There's the overflow structure, it's a, has a trash rack on it to keep, keep from getting clogged, and we believe, as well as it's maintained, there's no reason it should ever get clogged at this point. It's, it's very nice grass, there's no cattails or trees in there. Go ahead. That is a picture of a, of a small pipe through the, through the golf course that just drains low-flow surface water through the course and outlets here, and one of the parts of this agreement has us to repair a little bit of erosion on the left side there. You'll see, there's where some, it's, it's not, it's actually a little bigger now, maybe, than it was in this picture, but it's, it's a pretty small area that we can maintain, take care of. That's part of this agreement as well. That's how big it is, not very big. Six inches, I believe. And that's just a picture of kind of a outlet along the, be the west side of the course that drains water around Mariposa into the pond. And again, it's in well-maintained, good shape. So, these, I think that's all we have, isn't it, John? One more picture, just looking at the west side of, or the south side of the pond versus the whole pond. This is a view from the golf course and around the trees that are on the golf course. That's it. Thanks, John.
If I may, suggest that we focus on the agreement itself, and I'll try to go through that quickly, and please don't hesitate to interrupt me if you, if we get to a point where you have any questions. You know you're in trouble when it takes more than two pages to get the recitals in, but the first several recitals are setting the stage for how it is, at this point in time, that the Mariposa Homeowners Association is responsible for maintenance of the pond and the drainage facilities. The recitals also speak to the anticipated development of Grand Prairie addition, and Grand Prairie addition's need for a sanitary sewer easement. And when I say need for, there is the existing easement that is referred to there that runs along the north boundary of the Mariposa subdivision. It is quite complex in terms of the way the neighboring properties have developed that easement, in terms of landscaping, fencing, those sorts of things, as well as it does present a more involved installation for the developers of Grand Prairie as well. So, it was in all parties' interest to look to the southern route. I think if you look at recital J, there on the top of page three, that pretty well sums up what we're trying to accomplish here, in terms of making provision for the grant of that public sanitary sewer easement to the city by Mariposa Homeowners Association, determining the compensation to be paid by Cornerstone, the developers of Grand Prairie, to the association for that easement, and then the matter of addressing ongoing maintenance and inspection of the drainage facilities, as well as repairs or replacement of those drainage facilities. Section 1 of the agreement addresses that easement, and a copy of that easement is attached. The city will be responsible for ongoing inspection of both the pond and the drainage facilities, and Mariposa, as they have done, will continue to be responsible for the maintenance of, the ongoing general maintenance of the detention pond and the drainage facilities. That's addressed there in section 3. We then need to make the distinction between, then in 4, we're dealing with the matter of repair or replacement of the drainage facilities. That would be the potentially more expensive aspects, that should there be circumstances that would require either repair or replacement of those. That has been addressed. The proposal took a look at the contribution in terms of post-development runoff from the watershed that, that pond takes care of. And if you look on that aerial, you'll see that blue outline, that is the full watershed. And as you can see, there is contribution by Mariposa subdivision itself, there's contribution by the golf course, and there is contribution by the proposed Grand Prairie addition. The city at large component includes the golf course, there are some areas of East Ridge addition, there is the Hayworth yet-to-be-developed tract, and then portions of Cedar Ridge. The concept is that, as we look to those events that might require that level of expenditure, that the city at large would be responsible for its percentage, and that the Mariposa addition, in exchange for part of the compensation being paid by Grand Prairie, would assume Grand Prairie, or Cornerstone, as it's identified here, would assume their 27.6% share. So, you have the sum of $20,000 being paid by Cornerstone, as it develops Grand Prairie, for a combination of the easement plus the long-term responsibility for any maintenance of the Mariposa drainage facilities. The rest of the document goes to how that is addressed and how that would be recovered. We fully anticipate that everyone would fulfill their responsibility, but in that the city would be involved in the contracting for that work, there is provision, should it be necessary, to collect against those lots in the Mariposa subdivision. Because the Lot 5, oh, I'm sorry, Block 5, a portion of the Mariposa subdivision is not included currently within the Homeowners Association, we did make a special provision there under 4D, that if Mariposa simply makes a good faith effort to collect that portion, and if that would fail for any reason, the city will quickly move to its ability to assess against that Block 5, under the original maintenance covenants, and then Mariposa would simply pay the net balance and take care of their responsibility in that manner. The one change that I should point out, since, from the version that was in your packet to the version that is before you, what was addressed in paragraph 5 has now been split out into paragraphs 5 and 6. We believe it is a fairly academic consideration, but it is something that the parties in their respective interests, we needed to deal with a little more specifically. And that is the matter of the Cornerstones' ongoing responsibility. Now, Cornerstone, as they develop Grand Prairie, and as you'll hear more about in the rest of the items, are certainly addressing what is their responsibility to detain water in their subdivision, or to slow it down, so to speak, before it passes on through the golf course and ultimately into the Mariposa pond. There are a series of detention ponds that serve that function. We anticipate that the city, well, we know that those will be constructed, or we anticipate that they'll be constructed, as a general improvement under contract by the city and specially assessed. We also anticipate that the ongoing maintenance of those will be handled by a transfer of title to the city, and ongoing maintenance by the city, under the city's policy whereby Cornerstone, as the developers of Grand Prairie, can pay a specified sum for the city to undertake that responsibility. That would be as the development progresses. If you're Mariposa, you say, "Well, that's all fine and well," but there's the theoretical But there's the theoretical possibility that Cornerstone could remain responsible for those upstream ponds, if for some reason it didn't work out for the city to take on that responsibility. Likewise, if you're Grand Prairie, or the Cornerstone folks, you go to, "Well, now, wait a minute. We know what the plan is, so don't be putting in this agreement that we're going to have this ongoing responsibility if we know that that ultimately is going to pass to the city." That's why paragraph six is rather long, but it attempts to address all of those scenarios, assumes that the Cornerstone folks would not have any further responsibility upon the city undertaking that responsibility after the payment is made by Cornerstone to the city for those upstream ponds. But also recognizes you have two other potential scenarios. One, that Cornerstone could retain responsibility, or they could pass that responsibility on to a homeowners' association. And in both those cases, to address the Mariposa interest, it provides that if for some reason they would retain that responsibility, and they would be, either through intentional acts or negligence, somehow prompt damage to the Mariposa pond, then they would still be potentially responsible. As I say, we expect that to all be rather academic, but it was necessary to address it at this point in time, in anticipation of the city and Cornerstone ultimately finishing that transaction, where the city would be responsible. That, I think, is the essence of the agreement. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them. I should add, and I don't mean to skim past the threshold policy question here, and Mr. Gage might wish to address that in more detail. Obviously, as you look at it now, you see Mariposa responsible for that pond and its ongoing maintenance. This presents a what is fair now that the area is more fully developing, in terms of handling the golf course runoff, in terms of handling the Grand Prairie runoff. That's the basic policy question that this all presents, and the equity of how this should be handled.
Questions of the staff?
Mr. Bangston, I just noticed, as I was looking over this again, on section 4C on page four, the heading is Identification of Need for Repair or Replacement. I just wonder if we need to more specifically address replacement, or is that somewhere else in the contract?
The -- are you speaking of the distinction between repair and replacement?
Right. And it just looks like the heading, it talks about replacement, but the body doesn't reference replacement, it just references repairs.
Oh, I see your point. And that is a good point. And I think that -- yes, that should be added.
I'll open it up for public comment. Seems there is none. I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor, I move that we approve resolution 09-6618, the agreement among the Mariposa Homeowners Association, Cornerstone Development Group LLC, and the City of Salina.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number 09-6618, authorizing an agreement among Mariposa Homeowners Association, Cornerstone Development Group LLC, and the city.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0.
Item 7.2, accept the offered easement right away and restricted access dedication and authorize the mayor to sign the Grand Prairie addition plat.
Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissions. This is a companion item to the item you just discussed. This deals with the -- both inside the body of the plat and also some requests from the Grand Prairie subdivision for support and partnering with the City of Salina on a couple of matters here. But if you first go back to 1967, that's when the municipal airport moved from its location out on East Crawford over to the current location at the former Schilling Air Base. And as a follow-up to that, a golf course plan was developed for the former airport site, and the Graves family was approached about contributing some property to the golf course layout. And one of the things that you will notice as a result of that is that you end up with some narrow peninsulas of land that are privately owned between holes on the golf course. And those are mostly between holes seven and 12, and holes 13 and 14. And if we look at the aerial photo here, this piece of ground here is privately owned, and then there's a peninsula right here that's also privately owned. And, John, if you could go to slide 14, which is the Mariposa master plan. Then, in 1988, there was a plan put forward by the Graves Family Trust, and their plan was to master plan and develop this entire area. And as it turned out, the Graves family did not end up developing the entire area, but they did develop this, which is Mariposa addition, and they also platted a property here that's currently owned by Dr. Siddiqui. What happened after that, in 1989, is that the Florida Soul area, which is right here, a townhome area, and Briargate, right here, closer to Markley Road, developed. And then in 2004, Bob Hayworth purchased property from the Graves Family Trust and developed what's referred to as the Cedar Ridge addition, and that's down here. And at that time, Cloud Street and Marymount, we used to come down in a gravel road there. That was eliminated, and a new street was built through there, which is Cedar Ridge Drive. And so that's how we got to where we are today. And now, the Cornerstone Development Group has basically purchased this piece in here from the Graves Family Trust, and they're proposing to develop a residential subdivision. And early on, they identified, because of the unique layout and the interaction with the golf course, that their plan would work better if they could work in cooperation with the golf course and the city of Salina. So they proposed a number of golf course and property swaps. And also, they recognized the fact that to get utilities connections where they needed to be, there was going to need to be easements across the golf course property. So they requested city participation and cooperation. And one of the things that they offered was swapping some land back to the golf course and giving the golf course access through here and in a location here, so that golf course personnel would not have to go around the subdivision to do maintenance, but we would have strips of land there that would be given to the golf course. The other part that was discussed early on was to construct a pond here to detain water, which would actually be on golf course property, would be a source potentially of water for the golf course, and also a water hazard for golfers. So there was a formal request made in January of 2008, and the city commission voted at that time to cooperate and participate in their plat layout, their rezoning applications, and those have been moving forward since that time. There was a preliminary plat that was filed in February of '08 that went to the planning commission in March. There were a number of issues identified, but it was approved by the planning commission with a number of conditions, most of which have been addressed at this point. And so they came back with a final plat with 70 residential building lots. And all of those would be for single-family homes, and also with an application to rezone the property from its agricultural zoning to R1, single-family residential. The primary thing that occurred, and Mr. Snyder can expand on this if you have questions, is we asked them to stake out the pond location on the golf course. And when that was done, both golf course staff and golfers expressed dissatisfaction with the location and layout and configuration of the pond. So between the preliminary and final plat, they had to redesign, and they moved the ponds from the golf course proper back onto their own site. So now, there's a pond here and a pond here to catch water coming off of that slope. And that's the primary design. When the planning commission saw it in the spring of '08, it had the idea for the golf course pond. As far as street access, they are proposing public streets throughout the subdivision. It's very hard to read names, but this is Bent Grass Drive and Larkspur Lane, and then Cabirin Court is a cul-de-sac here. These are conventional streets, except right now, the design for this south 800 feet is to have a widened boulevard or parkway design. And 45 of the 70 lots would have access on Bent Grass. No individual driveways would be allowed on Cedar Ridge Drive, all the driveways would be on the internal streets. As part of this, and due to the terrain and the way it's laid out, they requested two variances from the planning commission. One was the normal maximum strength of a dead-end street is 600 feet, this is 2,300 feet. And also, they have some street curves there that are a little tighter than the standard radius, so they requested variances for that. And there's really no alternative as to how you lay this out, given the golf course and the ownership pattern there. What was proposed and accepted by the golf course staff, because there's a roadway already there, and that is to construct a emergency access from Markley Road over to the northern cul-de-sac, the north end of the Bent Grass Drive. There's already somewhat of an existing drive there that's been used for years to go in and launch fireworks on the Fourth of July. They're actually shot off right in this location, and there's a gravel-based road that goes off over to Markley Road. So if you had an emergency, and for some reason the entrance at Cedar Ridge Drive was blocked, that would provide a second way in for emergency vehicles to get in. Another aspect of this, which is hard to read, is that they're proposing a network of rear yard pedestrian trails that would basically parallel the edge of the golf course and be in the rear yard of individual lots. They have a total of 74 lots on their plat. Two are set aside for drainage easements, two -- there's a lot here and a lot over here that are too small to be buildable. They're basically going to be open space, and they may be adopted by the abutting owner just as extra yard area, but they were set aside as separate lots. But all -- other than those lots, all the lots are of adequate size and frontage to allow for buildability. As far as the water supply and fire flow, they're proposing to bring a line off of Markley Road into these cul-de-sacs, and then they're going to loop a line from this cul-de-sac over to Markley Road. That will necessitate going across the golf course in that location, but that will give them two connections and two sources of flow. I think you understand the discussion about the sanitary sewer, but what they will do is that they will have a collection point here, construct a sewer under the golf course fairways to here, and then across the fairways here over to get to the edge of the Mariposa pond. So these easements that you see here are for a sewer line that will extend that entire length. Again, these will be public sewer lines, and they'll connect to an existing manhole in the Mariposa addition. The city has a program by which building permit fees are collected and go into a neighborhood park fund. There's currently no neighborhood park set aside in this area, but there will be fees collected that will build up a fund for school attendance. Right now, it's Meadowlark, Lakewood, and Salina Central would be the enrollment areas. All the streets inside the subdivision would be public, all utility and drainage easements would be public, and we would also have restricted access on Cedar Ridge Drive, meaning no We'll also have a number of easements, which we'll discuss, going across the golf course. And that now might be the time to go there, John. I think that would be the one with the off-site easements. Well, we'll talk about this first, John. This is kind of a summary, and you'll have to scroll it up, I believe. But there are a number of land swaps here where the golf course is being asked to square off a boundary between holes 13 and 14, to square off nine lots on Larkspur Lane. Cornerstone is giving back some property south of the number 15 hole, tee box. They're also giving some land along the west side of hole number seven that would be added to the golf course. There's a strip of land on the west side of seventh hole that will go to the developers to square off and deepen three residential lots. They're proposing to dedicate four 12-foot-wide cart-trail corridors to the city. Those would be owned by the city and become part of the golf course. So this is the net result here, which is, the request is that 1.49 acres of current city or golf course property would become part of individual lots, and 0.43 acres of property currently owned by them would go back to the golf course to widen fairways or square areas off or to provide access. And they are asking for three drainage easements, three utility easements, and one emergency access easement crossing golf course property. That's one of the PDFs there, John. You have this at your place there, it's probably easier to read on the 11-by-17 aerial photo, but the -- there is, the drainage easement is, there's water coming off, there'll be a little, small secondary pond there that will catch runoff and slow it down before it enters the golf course. There's one here, just to the south of the ponds, and that's between holes number, the green for number 12, and the tee box for number 13 in this low area here. And one other area right here will catch water coming off that cul-de-sac and capture it before it enters the golf course. As far as utility easements, you're talking about a segment coming. This showed the emergency access easement over to Markley. This is a water line easement over to Markley. This is a sewer segment crossing the golf course here, then to here, and then this is the easement through the Mariposa pond, and this is where the manhole, where it all needs to end up. So that is a depiction of how that would work as far as the off-site easements. And then, John, we have a slide on different maintenance responsibilities. And I don't recall if that's -- so we tried to go through and explain, if they wish to have a parkway and subdivision entrance signs coming in, they are going to create, they'll have covenants and create a homeowners' association. The city has maintained things like Belmont Boulevard or South Ninth medians, but we have not maintained medians or parkways in residential areas. So if they want to have parkways, those center islands would have to be maintained by their homeowners' association, not the city. We would make sure their covenants address that. They have a choice of either having the homeowners' association or individual lot owners maintain those rear yard pedestrian paths. That has worked both ways in the city, but if it's individual lot owners, you may tend to have less even maintenance, because you could have different owners who have a different opinion about how it's to be maintained, but that is a choice for the developers. As Mr. Bangston mentioned, the plan would be, their plan is, when the ponds are all completed and accepted by completed and accepted by the city, that we calculate a fee for them, and that they would pay that fee and turn the ponds over to the city. But that would occur at a later time, and that would be a decision for you to accept or not accept. The golf course detention areas would be maintained by golf course staff, the cart trails by golf course staff, the emergency access road path maintained by golf course staff. And then after the utility lines are installed and compacted, and all those areas or corridors would be continued to be maintained by the city staff, most, the golf course staff. So this item actually went to the City Planning Commission in December, and they voted to approve the application for final plat approval on December the 16th, including the requested variances. And they did that subject to a number of conditions, which have been addressed by the applicant and their design team. We'll just point out that all utilities will be underground. There's an expectation that even with the rear yard pass, there will be sidewalks on both sides of all the public streets, except for the short cul-de-sac. That final engineering designs must be approved by the city engineer before they begin any construction. And they would have to pay a pond maintenance fee if they wish to try to turn those ponds over to the city of Salina. I think the only thing that we would note is that the city is in a dual role here, both of accepting the offered dedications of, but also granting the utility easements, drainage easements, and access easements that are on the golf course proper. And the plan is that, and maybe we can go back to the aerial photo, John. You can barely make out that this golf course today comes to a peak, almost a triangle, and so the city will be partial owner of these lots based on that arrangement. And what would occur after the plat is all finalized and recorded is that the city would come back in and quitclaim away any interest it had in owning, or ownership in any of those lots, so that Cornerstone would be the full owner. But because we are plating property that today is owned by the city, the city is both a partner in dedicating and a partner in accepting easements. So with that, I'll accept any questions that you have. And I know Steve Snyder's here if you have questions about the golf course operation.
First off, I like this picture right here, if you want to reference this one. What did you say was the distance for safety measures of a street? That first...
The standard for a dead-end residential street, the maximum length is 600 feet.
600. What is this first one, just out of curiosity? The one that goes all the way and ends in that little cul-de-sac? No, no, on the left.
The one that forks to the left?
The left side.
I think it's between 700 and 800 feet, but all the focus was on the longer one, which is closer to 2,300.
And I had a question about that one, too, and I think you answered it with the emergency access. How does that work for residential homes that are being built? Obviously, that easement for the fire truck or the EMS to come through, I mean, does it have to be wide enough for them to be able to come through and then access the street on that end? So do they have like an alley between their homes, or how does that work?
There would be a 20-foot-wide, either gravel or asphalt milling, so it would come right through those side yards there, and there would be an easement there that would designate that. But ideally, that should be in place before anybody starts building, so they would know that it's there and know what the purpose of it is.
Okay, so back on this other shorter street, that was 700 and some odd feet. We don't have to figure out emergency access to that street at this point? Since it's gone over your 600?
If there was a block, the primary concern is if you had a tree fall or a blockage here, you could still come in here. It would take longer, but the whole point is not to have the subdivision completely cut off from access by having only one way in. So you would still be able to come in this way to get there.
Okay. See, that was, that would be my concern. I'm a little claustrophobic just thinking about that. The other question I had is when they're tearing up the golf course to put in all these lines, how long is that going to be torn up? And what is that safety factor when it's running right through your, right through your place of entertainment?
I think you've got the letter there from Mr. Snyder, but the easement that was prepared specifically prohibits any excavation for that sewer line, except between November 1st and April 1st. So the timing on that is if they're going to excavate across the golf course, it has to be done after November 1st and be completed before April 1st, so that it's not...
But in the event of a mild winter, we would still have people golfing. So how does that, how does that work? How's that safe?
I think I'll let...
And how torn up, how torn up would that be?
Martha Tasker or Dan address what that would look like during construction and what the period of excavation would be.
As far as what the trench would look like, it's very shallow there. The trench is roughly, I think, four, five foot deep, so it's not going to be a wide, open, deep trench like you may have seen in some other sewer areas. The contractor would be required to put up some fence and protection of that area and to avoid any possibility of one of the golfers to fall within that area. But it's quite shallow, so it looks a lot different than what you might have seen on some other sewer-type projects.
Does it block any of the trails? Is it going to block the trail?
It will block part of them. That's correct.
So when it's blocked, they won't be able to get on with their golf cart and will have to walk that path?
Take that part of it.
Okay. Can you tell I care about our golfers?
I'm a golfer, and that's a big deal. We have a city inspector who will have to be out there, and they really have to, and when they cut a cart path, they have to be able to have an area that they can else, go elsewhere.
A detour.
A detour, yeah. So it's going to be a constant detour route on the course for that whole length of, we'll be cutting across one, two, four fairways, basically.
Right.
Martha did talk about the depth of the sewer, so the majority of it's pretty shallow, which helps us. It goes pretty quickly. But again, we have to be out there constantly and putting up barricades and detours and areas for them to go around. And golfers, as long as they can get across, they're pretty, they're okay driving on non-cart path areas, so I don't think that'll be an issue. But we'll have to monitor it constantly.
And in a perfect world, with good weather, from start to finish, what do you think? How long is that going to be disrupted? Just guesstimate.
How long's it, how many feet a day?
I think, I think they'll probably be roughly a week and a half in each area from when they start. The fact that it's shallow, they'll move through there very quickly.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's the intent of the developers also and the engineer that worked on their project. A pretty short timeframe to get through these areas.
Okay.
And we haven't talked about it really with Steve, because it's a front nine and a, what was it, all the back, it's basically all the back nine. So we could, theoretically, we could close the back nine if we have to. I don't know of the, you know, based on the winner, based on how many golfers are out there.
Right, right.
It's really going to be how, up to Steve to a certain extent, and then how fast it's going. I mean, there'll be a lot of coordination at the time.
Okay.
We definitely don't want to upset the golfers, and we'll work as fast as we can.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, on the emergency access road that you have coming off Markley, give me a little feel for what that road is. I really like the layout of the division. I like the way that it appears to be a nice win-win for what it's going to do to the city asset and the development.
Off-site course easements, John?
What type of, I know you said that we run traffic over there to shoot the fireworks off now. What would exist now? And then what are we going to change to, or what are we going to need in that area? How's it going to look on the course?
Do you want to describe what's there today, Steve?
On the emergency access?
Yeah, where the gravel path is. It really lays over almost exactly what is a gravelled path today.
Okay.
Yes, the emergency access exists today. It actually cuts from Markley in front of the number three T-Box, crosses the cart path for number three. But when we put the cart path in in the late or the mid-'90s, we thickened and beefed up that particular section to accommodate the larger, the fire truck or an ambulance. Runs along on the east side of number two, crosses in front of the number eight T-Box into the area you see were outlined in yellow. So that, that particular access road does exist today and has function, and we designed the cart path crossings to accommodate the vehicles, so really no changes from what we...
No real construction in that area or anything? Good.
Mr. Andrew, there's this strip of land that would be kind of sandwiched in between Mariposa and the Grand Prairie addition. I think, did you say that's what Dr. Siddiqui owns?
There is a rectangular-shaped piece that is platted as part of Mariposa that's vacant today. It's this wooded piece right here.
That's what I'm looking at.
That was, in 1988, that was intended to be a self-contained town home development with private streets and a common area, and that has not changed to date, and there hasn't been any proposal either to develop it or to change it at this point in time.
Does sandwiching it in these two additions make it less likely or make it so that it would not be able to be developed?
It will still have access down off of Cedar Ridge Drive, and then it's just a function of how they want to lay that out. You could end up subdividing that into four lots or something and have a short dead-end street, but whatever's being done here will not make it any less or more difficult. Actually, all the activity that's gone on around it with roads being built and water lines put in makes it more developable today than it was.
Make it something done there with all the activity. Okay.
So the action today, if you are in agreement with the approval by the Planning Commission, would be to authorize the mayor to sign the plat and accept the offered easement, street right-of-way, and restricted access dedications within the plat on behalf of the city. And then we pointed out, there are seven utility drainage and emergency access easements that cross the golf course. And as a follow-up to that action would be a motion to authorize the dedication of those across the golf course to support the development. So you'd be both accepting the first part and then giving in the second part.
Okay, I'll ask for public comment. Please give us your name and address.
Jesse Velazquez, 1711 North Fifth Street here in Salina. I just wanted to make a statement regarding the liability to the city when people are out there and there's open trenches. My suggestion would be to just close it and therefore reduce the liability for the city somebody walking into one of those things or getting hurt, or something along those lines. That's my statement.
Thank you very much for your comment, sir. I addressed the very same thing myself just a couple of minutes ago, and I'm sure we will use all precaution necessary. And if so, I think the city and the golf course would feel it necessary to close the that back eight or back nine. Not a copper.
Whatever, whatever area it's going to be under construction should be off limits. Give the golfers time with their families.
Okay. Thank you. We'll take that under advisement. Any other public comment? If not, I'll bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Okay, I'll take a stab at it, Mayor. Mayor, I move that we approve application P-08-2A, which would authorize you to sign the plat and accept the offered easement, golf course maintenance right-of-way, street right-of-way, and restricted access dedications on behalf of the city.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the offered easement, right-of-way, and restricted access dedication, and authorize the mayor to sign the Grand Prairie addition plat, application P-08-2A. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0.
The second part of that is that we have prepared, I believe, seven easements for the mayor's signature crossing the golf course. And so the second part of that would be a motion to authorize the mayor to sign those easements going across the golf course on behalf of the city.
I'll ask for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve your signature for the seven public utility easements, drainage access easements for this subdivision project.
I'll second that again.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the seven public utility drainage and access easements outside the boundaries of the plat and authorize these dedications as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 4-0.
Item 7.3, second reading ordinance number 0810443, providing the change in zoning district classification to R1 in the Grand Prairie addition.
We've had quite an education today on this Grand Prairie addition. Ordinance number 0810443 was passed on first reading April 7th, 2008, and since that time, no comments have been received. Are there any public comment, comments? If not, I'll ask the clerk for roll.
Motion.
I need a motion to accept these as presented.
Mayor, I move that the Commission adopt ordinance number 08-10443 on second reading.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept ordinance number 0810443 on second reading. Will the clerk please call roll?
Commissioner Angel.
Aye.
Commissioner Arbke.
Aye.
Commissioner Jennings.
Aye.
Mayor Larson.
Aye. Passes for, motion passes 4-0. There is no administration. There is no other business, so I'll...
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
May I for a moment?
Sure. Please give us your name and address.
My name is William. I'm a partner in the Cornerstone Development, and I would like to express our thanks for your patience in wading through all of the technicalities that have come up, especially because of the uniqueness of the property. And I would like to publicly thank city staff. I know quite often, city staff is thought of as sometimes a hurdle to get by. That's quite the opposite in our case. City staff has been most helpful. They have volunteered many, many hours on our behalf, and I wanted to thank not only you, but certainly thank them, and most especially Parks and Recreation Department, the golf course personnel, and Steve Snyder. I want to thank you all.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate those kind of comments. If there's no other business, I will ask for adjournment.
Move that we adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.